Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Work Session for July 13. Welcome, everyone, here and at home. We have changed, in case you haven't had a chance to look at the order, we're going to do the library first and the MUFI discussion second. So, we're going to start out with the library discussion. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Renee and her team to kind of take us through a presentation and then turn it over to the council for questions and possible action.
Connie?
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor and councilors, for the opportunity to speak to you again today about the planning we've been doing for the Library of the Future. As you'll recall, we shared the community's vision for the future of library services with you in January, and at that time, you asked us to prepare information for a five-year levy to be placed on the November ballot and returned to you in the spring. Accordingly, last month, we outlined for you two possible options for a five-year library local option levy. Today, I've brought a more fully-developed recommendation for the less costly of those two options, which you heard about in June. And the recommendation includes both more detailed information about the enhanced services that would be provided to the community, and it also includes a built-in accountability As a reminder for not so much you, but for the audience and the people listening at home, the services currently provided by Eugene Public Library would continue to be supported by the general fund and donations. Levy funding would cover costs associated with the proposed enhanced services above and beyond what is currently provided. And current library services include three full-service locations, a 24/7 virtual branch through the library's website, and some limited off-site services such as the Story Time to Go program, which brings trained volunteers to preschools and daycares to provide story times to preschoolers. And before going into the details of the proposed levy, it may be helpful to briefly review why we selected this particular group of enhanced services. As we've envisioned library services of the future, we looked at trends in our community and the country. We've looked at best practices within the library profession, standards such as the triple bottom line, sustainability. We've talked with diversity of community members, and last October, community members participated in a visioning process of Library of the Future. We sought advice from the Library Advisory Council and the library supporters such as our Friends Group and the Library Foundation. In April, we contracted for a survey to assess voter support and service priorities of the community. And of course, we've listened to the advice provided by council on our previous presentations. All indicators point to three priorities for our community's library. Number one is building young readers. Supporting and building early literacy skills is crucial to prepare our children for success in life. Second is supporting success in school and work. Supporting individuals in their learning for whatever their personal goals are not only ensures their own success, but also builds a more vibrant and prosperous community. And thirdly, as you know, equity is a very strong value in our community. Better access to library services and public resources supports community equity. In June, I presented two options, one at $3 and one at $4, both within the community's willingness to pay as tested in the April survey. Tonight, I am recommending to you a proposed five-year levy, five-year library local option levy at the $3 level. This is the smallest supplemental levy that will accomplish the desired outcomes. The proposal is designed to leverage our current resources, investing in service strategies that have proven to be effective. You heard about a range of possible enhancements in June. And in this levy recommendation, the library has focused on service enhancements in three specific areas designed to address these community priorities. These are better access to library services through enhanced hours, an expanded offering of free programs for all ages at multiple locations, and additional materials and technology for community use. The first area of focus begins with adding open hours to provide better access and meet community's current needs. We hear often and loudly that the reduced hours at Bethel and Sheldon branches, as well as Sunday mornings downtown, create a barrier to service for many community members. After careful analysis, we believe that increasing to 48 hours over six days a week at branches and restoring the three hours on Sunday morning at the downtown library will better meet community needs. The types of expenditures that will be made to accomplish these service goals are primarily for personnel costs, as well as for additional utilities and custodial costs associated with longer open hours. The second area of focus is an expansion of the library's free programs for the community. Currently, the library, at the library every week, there are programs or special events for young kids, teens, and adults. Limited off-site programs, in addition to the Story Time to Go I mentioned earlier, include delivery of books to homebound seniors in senior centers, and we also have some limited deposit collections at preschools and senior centers. Right now, there are many community members who do not have access to these programs because of transportation issues or because of our own capacity issues. At times, we have to turn people away. With levy funding, we will increase the number of programs offered to our community by 33%. This will add programs at all three locations, as well as additional off-site locations throughout the community. There will be some specific priorities for the program expansion areas. Bringing services to young readers, literacy, as mentioned before. Our teen programs are in need of expansion. We have limited capacity for that area. And then, we want to expand on partnership opportunities. For example, right now, we're working with partners such as Rain and Lane Community College to provide workshops that respond to the needs of businesses and job applicants, training either applicants or potentially employees of the future. And we're currently beginning to provide some limited maker space type opportunities, which is wonderful self-directed learning equipment for all ages that provide shared access to tools and equipment that an individual may not be able to afford on their own. To accomplish these goals, expenditures would be made in personnel costs, including an expansion of the library's current volunteer program. Also included are materials, equipment, a van to bring more efficiently bring off-site programs directly to community members. And the levy would include funds to save for replacing equipment and the van when their useful life cycle has ended. The third focus is around the diversity of current materials and other resources that's critical for a relevant library that provides the needed resources for the Eugene of the future. Our community members borrow more library materials by far than the national average. The rate of circulation per capita determines the average number of times a typical community member borrows something from the library. And the national average is just over 10 per year. Eugene is over 19. With this level of interest in what the library provides to the community, it's important that our collection not become stagnant. Our community highly values a robust and relevant collection of materials, and we're talking about more than just printed books. We're also talking about eBooks, downloadable music, online learning tools, streaming video, puppets, and more. Also, people want plenty of copies. In the April survey, people referenced support for a levy so that there would be shorter wait times for popular items. And another critical role that the public library plays in a community is providing equipment and training to bridge the digital divide, the digital divide, to those who do not have access to technology themselves. That's tricky to say. So, focusing on more materials and technology, the third leg of this proposed levy, since 2009, the library's budget for materials has been reduced, and we need to build it back in order to meet the community's needs in this area. Levy funds would restore the library's material budget for new books and other resources to the level it was six years ago by adding $300,000. And providing access to technology, especially Internet access, we could double our Internet access that we provide at each of Bethel and Sheldon branches by not only increasing the hours, but adding a van unit, which I've talked with you about in previous presentations. This is a self-service access to a tablet or laptop for use in the library. When an individual using it returns it to the machine, it not only recharges it, but it wipes the material back to the original setting, so personal information is safeguarded. It would be a very cost-effective way to double Internet access at both branches. Expenditures in this category include materials, equipment, and services, also increase staff to support these services. The levy would include dollars to save for technology replacement when the tablets or laptops have reached the end of their useful lives. The accountability section. Eugene Public Library does have an excellent track record in accountability. We've responsibly managed a combination of general funds and levies for a period of 12 years from 2000 to 2011 during the three previous library levies. We've also been awarded the Star Library National Award five times, most recently in November of 2014. This is for being in the top 3% of libraries nationwide for cost-effectively providing library services to the community. But in addition to this, just to reassure everyone, we're built into the levy accountability plan, which will give community members confidence about the use of public funds and reduce any risk that the Eugene citizens will think that the money could be used in a way that was not intended when they voted for the levy. To address these concerns, we have three basic components that would be included in levy implementation. First, levy funds would be budgeted for and accounted for in separate funds that are easily tracked by members of the public in accordance with state law. Secondly, staff would be responsible for preparing an annual report to the Library Advisory Board, which will include details of the previous year's levy spending and related performance measures. The report would clearly lay out the library's budget and split it between general funds and levy funds. The Library Advisory Board would annually review this report to confirm that the spending complied with the intention of the ballot language. And then, subsequent to that, the city manager would provide to you, the city council, an annual memorandum about the library levy, which would include this staff report and any comments that the Library Advisory Board wished to add. This three-pronged approach is designed to give the community confidence that the funds would be appropriately spent through both published financial documents and a community panel review. It will also focus the conversation on how levy funds are accomplishing the key goals through this review of performance measures. So, in summary, the levy would provide additional funding to enhance services on top of those currently supported with existing funds. These would be in three categories: adding open hours, providing more programs for all ages, both onsite and throughout the community, and increasing the materials budget and access to technology, particularly at the branches. An accountability structure would provide confidence to community members that their investment is achieving the intended goals. For the $2.7 million, the typical home in Eugene would pay an average of $36 a year or $3 a month. The tax rate would be 17 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. And this is the recommendation that we present to you.
Thank you very much. I've got Mike in the queue and Claire. Else? Chris? Anybody else? Okay. I just wanted to say a couple of words, and that is, I think the clarity of the goals is wonderful, and the proposal, how it explains clearly what the proposal would do for library services in Eugene. So, I think that's great. And my only suggestion is, should council decide to move this forward tonight, as quickly as possible, get it up and accessible to people so they can start seeing this right away and understand, because it's very easy to understand. You've done a great job with it. Thanks. Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Connie, thank you for the presentation. As the mayor said, it was very, very clear. This is presented very well, and it's planned very well and very intelligently. I have and am one of the library's biggest cheerleaders. I think you and your staff do fantastic work. I have, to this point, been in favor of asking permission of our community to do this, that it's a good idea to send this out. I still am in favor of the idea of sending it out. I have a concern, though, because I can't, in this chair, I can't look at that question in isolation. And it's this, that since we've started doing this planning, we've had a PERS decision at the court that's going to put a burden on us, and no one can say certainly when. And I probably have a question or two for Sue over here. We may see in the second year of this levy, or the third, or the fourth year of this levy, a fairly large-scale increase in our PERS responsibilities that could perhaps be in the millions. In doing so, what I would hate to see is us put out a levy that we all support for a service we all support and the community pass it, and then have council have to take back money or cut services because of that PERS increase that would then leave the community feeling a little funny about their vote. So, I guess what I want to know is, how much can we know and when can we know it about a PERS increase? Can you guess for us how much it will be and at what point?
Well, I guess what I would start off by saying, you know, we're planning for a five-year period of time, and there are a lot of things we don't know about what could happen over the next five years. PERS is certainly one of the main things we don't know, but there are other things that we don't know, too. And so, as we've done the planning for this levy, we have tried to take that, you know, uncertainty into account. When we looked at the personnel costs out over the next five years for the folks that would be funded with levy funds, we have built in a factor for PERS rate increases. Of course, we don't know exactly what those will be, but we do know some of the parameters. You know, PERS has various rules around how much rates can increase over different periods of time, and so, we've tried to accommodate what we can know about that based on information around PERS rate increase rules and very preliminary estimates from the actuary that have come out to date. The other thing that we've done is, because there is uncertainty, both in the area of PERS and many other things that we can't know about today, is we have a contingency factor built into the levy fund. For those things that we don't know, we don't know yet. So, we really have tried to make sure that we'll be able to provide the services that we're committing to provide in this levy.
My question isn't about the PERS impact of the levy, specific additional employees or additional time. My question, and I appreciate your answer, I think, too, that this is incredibly well-planned. My question is really more about citywide, what has the court decision put on us as a liability when it comes? Is it a $3 million new liability that we haven't yet been planning for, four or five million? How much do you think it's going to be citywide where we might have to cut across the board in the future as we have in the past? Can you answer that at all now? I know it's preliminary.
Right. So, I cannot, I can't give you any quantification of what the impacts will be. The PERS board will be meeting in September to talk about the increases system-wide, and then we will get our individual employer rates, I'm guessing, maybe early December. So, we won't know. And those will be our rates starting July 1, 2017.
Seventeen.
2017, so FY18. So, our rates change every even-numbered year, right? So, every other even-numbered year. We just had an increase, and then we'll have another one in 18.
This levy would apply to July 1, 16 on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Fiscal?
FY17 and on, yes.
Fiscal, yeah. So, a year in advance of when that PERS thing would happen, that could potentially come in and hit us in the second year.
It's possible. What I would add also...
I apologize, Mr. Manager, because I want to hear what you have to say, too. But is it possible that there's a plan for how we might deal with that effectively so that we can say yes to this and deal with that appropriately?
Yeah, I guess what I was going to say is, maybe it helps with that second question as well. One of the things that this council and the Budget Committee and the staff have done, really, over the six years, have positioned us well at this moment financially. And so, what, you know, the budget that you just approved is a stable budget, and that's really stable over the forecast period, where we see towards the end of that, we're actually starting to move up in our reserve for revenue shortfall, which is pretty significant if we think about something like this. And so, just to piggyback on what Sue has talked about, the PERS is just one of dozens of things that go into the various factors for that forecast. I think as we've looked very preliminarily at the impact of that, and really, remember, it's a couple of years out in PERS rates, I'm comfortable that we are not placing an undue risk on other general fund services or the general fund itself. And that's just based on where we've positioned ourselves so far and at this moment, and just trying to do the best job we can forecasting, knowing that we only know this much of the total budget like that. And so, and I think you know that over the last six years, I and we have been very conscious about not overreaching, living within our means, and if I thought this were putting us at undue risk, I definitely would not be recommending it. So, I'm, just from where I think we sit right now, I'm comfortable recommending it because I think we've positioned ourselves well. Could there be some catastrophic recession that hits us like it did in 2008? Absolutely. There could be all sorts of those kinds of things, but sort of given where we are now, I think we're in a, we're an okay place not to put the rest of the general fund or those services at substantial risk going forward.
My chief fear is that we'll, we'll put this out, the voters will approve, and then at some point, two, three, four years down the road, we'll have to cut some of those additional services because of the general fund pressure. I can't ask you to guarantee that won't happen.
Right. Can guarantee it, but I think we're positioned well.
We're kind of taking a chance.
To try to minimize some of that risk without guaranteeing. We can't guarantee it. I agree with that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Claire, and then Chris, and then Alan.
Thank you. So, I very much appreciate the fine-tuning that staff has done to really dial in on the services that are both most needed and most valued by patrons and the community. And, you know, just even based on the feedback we received when we cut the branch library hours, you know, a few years ago, which was a very hard choice, you know, people are going to be very pleased to get those library hours back. I know it really impacted users of those two branches to have those cuts. And I just want to remind folks that the Library Foundation, Friends of the Library, and the League of Women voters have all weighed in with their support for this levy and their willingness to promote its passage to voters. So, to me, that indicates a very serious level of support for this levy and an understanding of what our options are for local funding that we can rely on for this important service. And so, you know, assuming council moves this forward, it will be up to the voters to decide whether or not they want to take on this added levy. I think it's important for voters to know that a prior library levy was allowed to expire by the council because that was the promise that was made to voters at that time. Unfortunately, the timing was such that the recession hit right then, and no one could have anticipated that, and we faced the cuts that we ultimately made. But I bring that up because there are folks who are convinced that once we adopt a new tax, we'll never let go of it, and we have a very recent history of actually doing just that. So, while we're here again to consider whether or not we want to add this levy on, I think it's a good conversation for us to be having, and I will support sending this levy to the ballot for voters to decide its fate.
Chris?
Thank you. I think an important thread that is really worth considering in the conversation we've had so far is the notion of being prudent. We talked about this last time. We wanted to make a proposal that was both thoughtful and prudent, and I think what you've come back with is exactly that, and that's why I'm very comfortable with what you're offering. And our questions are also prudent in terms of, is this a prudent thing to do considering what the future might be? And what I think I'm hearing is, we know there is a PERS hit coming, and we're already processing that in our thinking. We know we'll need to do something around it. And so, as the city manager said, I wouldn't recommend this if I didn't think I had a thinking process that would probably, you know, at least help us with that. So, I'm comfortable there. And then, with regard to, you know, the unknown that we don't know, to paraphrase Donald Rumsfeld, we don't know what that is. It could be an earthquake. It could be a recession. Who knows? And the line between being prudent and being paralyzed is a very thin one. I don't want to be paralyzed, but I do want to be prudent. And so, in this case, I feel that there is enough safeguard in place that gives us the flexibility. You've defined the services specifically, so we would know what those are as opposed to the other services that are provided within a library. That's something that can also be communicated to the public, who is understanding of conditions beyond our control. So, with that in mind, I think prudence is still in effect here, and I can support what's being proposed because I think it still is on this side of being prudent, even as we don't know what the future will be. But I do think it is in our thinking process. So, with all that in consideration, yeah, I'm happy to support this proposal.
So, I just, Chris, and I say this with great respect, I just can't help but think of Dana Carvey.
Wouldn't be prudent.
Wouldn't be prudent.
This time.
Sorry.
I tighten my lips up now.
Okay, Alan.
I have to follow all of that.
So, well done, well thought out. I think you've gone about it correctly in getting the information that we needed and brought back and the surveys that you've done. So, I'm very comfortable with all of that. I especially like the three things associated with the accountability, that there'll be a separate budget counting for the levy funds and an annual report with a review, and then the city manager is going to make a report to the city council. I think all three of those things can ensure voters that we are spending the money as we said that we're going to. It's unfortunately really, really, really difficult, if not impossible, to actually lock this up in a way that, but these three things make me confident that people will look at those three things in total and say, yes, we spent the money that we said we're going to spend. We didn't spend it on roads or something else, or police or something. I, too, had a concern about the PERS and other things that might happen, but actually, my take on is a little slightly different than Mike's, which is that we, to keep faith with the voters, we might have to hold the city, the library services sacrosanct and whole and make cuts to other places. And so, that is kind of troubling when you think about it in kind of the abstract or even in the specific case, but we face that every time we do one of these things. And if that were, if you were, if I were to use that as my rationale for not voting for it, I'd never vote any of them because it would always be true. So, I understand that we are, potentially have some big-ticket items coming down the road. The PERS savings that we got was about 1.2, 1.3 million. I suspect it's probably going to be that and a little bit more, but it's not going to be too far off of that mark. And with the, with the, plus there's other things that PERS could do, but with the city manager's confidence and the ability to deal with that, I am also prepared to move forward with putting this on the ballot and encouraging people to vote for it.
Yes, this is for the public and for us. It's working, walking into it with your eyes wide open, so to speak, and that's the content for the motion.
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution attached as attachment A.
Second.
Move seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. In opposition, none. It passes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Ready, set, go.
We will be coming back. There will be a couple of things that the council will need to act upon, voters' pamphlets and some of those administrative kinds of things. So, there are a couple other items like that that'll be coming back probably in the next couple of weeks.
couple of weeks.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on, if I can just remind the council, now that you have placed a measure on the ballot, we're in an election environment, which means that staff can no longer do anything that's considered advocacy related to this measure. Staff can produce neutral information, but they can't help any of you, for example, to write an op-ed piece as to why the voters should pass it.
But you can put information about the content such as we have here and make that available for people.
I'd have to see what that particular one is, but I think it's already on the website.
Is it already up?
Uh...
I don't know if it's up. Is it up yet?
The PowerPoint from tonight?
It's cer- well, and it's certainly on the webcast.
Well, it doesn't tell you to vote. It just says, here's the information.
So we will be posting all the appropriate information on the website, yes.
The only trouble I ever have with, with the website is sometimes it's not easily apparent for where you go to find stuff. So I think the trick is to, to the extent we can, to look at it like we've never been by this before and easy, easy for people to have access to. Next comes the, another adventure in MPT ordinance concerning multiple unit property tax exemption. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And if it would be helpful, Glenn can just walk us through where we ended the other night, and then we can pick it up from there, because I know there's at least two councillors that have some things that they want to add. So if that would be helpful to have them just briefly walk through that.
What's coming around to you right now is the ordinance that I emailed out, the redline version of the ordinance that I emailed out last Friday. George, can you take one and pass it around?
Okay.
As well as the map of downtown, because I thought that might assist as you're, as trying to follow along with what I'm saying. So what you have in front of you is the redline version that shows the changes to the ordinance that were made based on your conversation last week. What this ordinance does is it applies the workforce housing requirement everywhere except downtown east of Charnelton. Before any MPT can be approved in any area other than downtown east of Charnelton, two things must happen. First, the council would have to adopt amendments to the MPT code that would specify the percentage of units that must be workforce housing or the in lieu of payment. And second, the council would have to adopt refinement plan policies for that area that specifically addressed multiple family and mixed-use projects, and those policies would have to be acknowledged under state law. For the area that is downtown east of Charnelton, there would be no workforce housing requirement. There would be a requirement that the owner of the property pay 10% of the property tax exemption with those payments dedicated to workforce housing. Alternatively, the owner could construct workforce housing as part of the project. The definition of project hasn't changed for the last six months, but just to remind you, that definition says that the development, that development that occurs after approval of the MPT on one or more contiguous lots, all owned by a single entity or covered by a city-approved master plan. So that's what you have in the version that I just passed around. And I can answer questions about it, or if you just want to have your conversation, have that.
So I have in the queue, George, Ron, and Betty.
I have a question about that last thing you said about contiguous developments. Where is that in the red?
In the ordinance? Page nine. In the, in the version I just handed out to you, if you look on page nine, middle of the page, the paragraph one, it's the last sentence of that for...
Wait, that's the adoption. Where's the red?
If you look at the one I just passed out.
Yeah. Steel, Betty, just for a second.
Page nine?
Page nine.
Middle of the page.
Okay. Single entity. And does this say that they, does this have the intent that they don't have to pay the 10%?
Correct. If, right, if they constructed workforce housing in, let's say, they actually built 30% of the units as workforce housing, then they would not need to pay the 10%.
All right. But you're saying that the developer has to do that. It cannot be another developer that constructs affordable housing.
One property.
One property.
Well, it's one.
Project.
Okay. So let, let me walk through this slower. So the project would be all new development that occurs after the approval of a MPT on one or more contiguous lots, all owned by a single entity.
I see.
Or alternatively, covered by a city-approved master plan. So all lots owned by one or more, owned by a single entity. My understanding, for example, of the Obie project is that there's one owner. It's the county. If there was a development, and Denny, correct me if I get any of this wrong, but if somebody builds, Obie applies for the MPT, gets the MPT, there is then a low-income housing project, affordable housing project, built on that site, let's say 100 units, and then Obie builds 100 units of just his real estate project. This would say, because it's all one or more contiguous lots owned by a single entity, that would count as this. So if you want to do something different, then we need to change this language.
Yes, there, there's a big problem with this, I believe. Specifically, it says workforce housing is, and the HACSA project is for affordable and low income. It's true, it's owned by, both parcels are owned by the county. But, so what this would do would be to forgive the Obie construction project from paying the 10% of, of the MPT back to the city for the workforce housing plan. That's not fair, because everybody else, let's just say Royal Brokaw Ovazi project, they would have to pay the 10%. That puts them at a disadvantage for their project. And I, I think that that should be struck, actually, just that whole section taken out, because I think it violates the whole spirit of what council's been working on for workforce housing and finding a fair way to fund the new workforce housing fund. The council majority was pretty solid with limiting the payback to 10%. I personally would have liked to see it a little bit higher, but council, that's was council majorities, and I've accepted that. I think that's a good idea. But to allow somebody, one developer, to skip out on this is not fair to all the other people that want to develop downtown. Because they're two separate projects. They will proceed at different paces. I, I spoke with Jacob Fox a few days ago. He's, I believe he's taking over for Larry Abel, who's retired. They're not going to start that project till 2017. They have found some environmental problems with gasoline tank underneath. And, and I mean, you know, we have this nice framework set up that, that we did last Wednesday, and to allow one developer out of all other potential developers to skip out on it, just because another entity happens to be building affordable, and it's not workforce, it's not workforce, it's affordable. They're two completely different categories. I don't think that's fair. And I think I would, will make a motion. It's not the one I originally, but I, I think we need to strike that.
Do you have a response to that?
I think from our perspective, you know, the, the public or the, the nonprofit affordable housing project developers, first of all, they do it very well. So it's a very attractive outcome from our perspective. Those units, 100% of them are going to be affordable to 100% of the tenants, and they're going to be affordable for at least 50 years. Who owns it is a little less important to us, because we're really after the outcome, and that is the maximum amount of affordable units. So, you know, whether we support it, if there's two different owners, I think the lightly, likely outcome right now in this market is that affordable housing is going to be co-developed with private development and different ownership. I don't think, history tells me that those aren't done together because we don't have a precedent that that's being done right now. So I think for now, this is the outcome that we would expect, and I think it's a positive one regardless of who owns it.
I guess the question is a legal one, though, but whether this qualifies, what George is saying is that the stipulation is to be worker housing, and it's not. It's affordable housing.
Well, workforce housing, as the council has talked about that in the past, has been housing that costs no more than a certain amount. And my understanding is that affordable housing, as Denny's talking about it, will cost less. So it would meet that criteria in that the housing can't be any higher than this amount.
Okay. All right. I've got Betty, Claire, Mike, Chris, and Alan in the queue. Betty?
Thank you. I want to say that regardless of whatever amendments I might vote for, I'm voting against MPT. And I want to, and this, what I'm going to say is, is much for the, more for the public than for the council, because I think the council has decided to vote for it. But I'm asking you to suppose that a single person in Eugene makes, has an income of about $24,000 a year. And there are people like that. Most of them female, probably. And that's intention or wages and/or. And this person owns a modest house, very modest, and a 10 to 12-year-old car, both paid for. So out of this 2,000 per month, which is 24,000, about 200 a month would be for real estate taxes. That will probably go up, but about that much at least. And 100 a month for car insurance approximately. Oh, homeowners insurance. 200 at least for EWEB, 150 at least for healthcare, even if you have insurance. And up to now, I think I've gotten up to $700 at least. And that leaves about $1,300 for car operation and maintenance, home repairs, food, clothing, phone, internet, healthcare that's not covered by insurance, and there's always some of that. Recreation, if you can afford it. And even, I'd like to mention that even a walk in Mount Pisca costs money now. It's up to $4 per walk unless you buy a season ticket. And imagine adding Pesci catastrophic illness of yourself or your parents or your children, if you have children. State and federal income tax. And when you think of all that, how do you feel about tax exemptions for developers? I know we're saying they'll give back some of their benefits, but if they didn't have it, they wouldn't need to give it back. I, I still believe that everybody should pay taxes, and I think all of us, if you give us a 10-year tax exemption, we'd be glad to give part of it back. Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, I had a different issue that we didn't get to discuss at our last MPT meeting, and that's about making sure the clawback provisions for noncompliance are as strong as possible in the ordinance. So I was going to ask either the city attorney or the city manager, can you articulate what are the mechanisms in the current draft of this ordinance to make sure that a contractor and their subcontractors build in compliance both with the program and with other laws related to wage and hour, workplace safety, safe demolition, and construction laws? Because as we know, there were issues with the most famous MPT program in town, and, you know, some of our motivation around retooling this program is related to lessons learned.
So there are two provisions, two main provisions in the ordinance that deal with what you're talking about. There's a different clawback, as I think Alan has used that term, related to the amount of investment or return that somebody may get. But just talking to what I think you're talking about. One provision is if they violate the resolution, the conditions of approval, any of those sorts of things that you just, laws, local, state, federal laws. There's a new section in on, in what I handed out to you. It's on page 12. It's the new subsection number eight that says, "In addition to everything else that we can do, the city manager now has the authority to impose administrative civil penalties for those kinds of, well, for any kind of violation." So if somebody violates wage and hour, workplace safety, any of those things, the city manager can assess a civil penalty for that. That part's new. The other part that has been in here, still is in here for violations of the conditions of approval, violations of the state statute related to MPTs. The council has the ability to terminate the MPT, the tax exemption. And so that is still part of this ordinance.
And what role do you envision the review panel playing in that part of the work?
Denny, help me here. I think what-
Not necessarily imposing fines, but evaluating compliance.
Well, I believe what we have in here is that the review panel, where there are the, as part of the first year reporting, there's going to be reports coming to the city, and I think the review panel reviews that stuff.
Yeah, that's correct. They'll review, you know, all of the compliance with all of the criteria generally, and will do that, I think, as I recall, midterm through the project. And then again, at the end of the project, to really look at compliance with all of the MPT criteria, you know, design, you know, if they said they were going to put brick on the building, is there brick on the building, as well as all the other compliance. Now, most of the other compliance is kind of complaint-driven, so that would probably have to come forward from the, you know, from the community in some form. We don't intend to be onsite monitoring labor issues, but, but those typically come from the outside, and we would have to deal with them when they, when they came forward, I think.
So at the top of page five of the ordinance that I handed out, there's that subsection B says the review panel shall, paragraph two says just what Denny was talking about, that the review panel shall midway through construction and upon completion assist the city manager in reviewing a project's compliance with a number of things.
So from your perspective, this would preclude the situation we found ourselves in with Capstone, where there were some allegations of violation of labor laws, and the city was like, sorry, we don't have jurisdiction over that, and our MPT program doesn't allow us to have any repercussions related to that. And so this helps mitigate that situation.
Correct. This would allow us to look into that, and if there are violations of laws, to assess civil penalties for that.
Great. And then what kind of authority might we have over subcontractors? Can, can our ordinance address compliance with subcontractors, or are we limited to holding a contractor accountable, or the developer who hires the contractor?
We would actually be imposing the penalties against the developer, the owner of the property. They should be aware of our ability to do that. They're the ones that would then want to make sure that they're holding their contractor and subcontractors accountable, because we would be imposing penalties against the owner, the, the developer.
Good. I think this is a, a real improvement and provides us with, I think, a much-needed backstop against that kind of, you know, bad developer that, you know, then in turn makes us look bad by having given them a nice big tax break. So while there's still issues around that, I think this improves the program immensely. So thanks for the added language.
Mike?
We need more people to live downtown. It helps move our community forward. It solves a series of goals that we've set for ourselves. It's important for our community's appropriate growth, and it's cheaper for everybody else when we build that way. We can't do it without this particular incentive. So it's my belief that the place we've come to isn't perfect for anybody, but it's at least palatable for almost everybody. It's a way for us to move forward and accomplish a whole series of other goals and not have it cost the community a great deal of money by building at the exterior edges. So it's wise for us to move forwards with what we have as an agreement at this- So, it's wise for us to move forwards with what we have as an agreement at this point. I understand George's point, and I understand his concern, but I would only offer my colleague the thought that the HACSA project would likely not happen in isolation, is my understanding. Is that it would happen as a result of what's happening with the OB overall project. They're separate in how they move forward, but they would not happen in isolation. And I think that's important, because the spirit of this, at least from the way I understand it, is if you're going to build something that gets a property tax exemption, there has to be sufficient community benefit for it. And part of that, and for me, I look at it as the whole development, as we've discussed it to this point. This provides a community benefit of affordable housing that wouldn't happen in the absence of the greater development. And so, I hope we can move forward with where we are, because we have the built-in review. If it's not working appropriately, we can check back with it. But I believe that if we try and deconstruct too much from where we landed the other day, we're going to find ourselves with an inability to move forward, and that concerns me.
Chris?
Thank you. Appreciate all the work that you've done in such a short amount of time. I want to zero in on the downtown element, because I think that's really the most important piece right now. And like others have said, we need housing downtown, and we need to get this thing landed specifically for downtown. I don't know what's going to happen in other parts of town or whether it'll even happen, but for downtown, I want us to land something so that we can accommodate it. I do also consider a project like the OB project to be one project. The creativity and the flexibility is in how they choose to administer it, but it's right. None of it would have happened if it hadn't happened as an entire project. So, to me, it qualifies as an entire project. And with that in mind, I want to zero in to specific element in what you handed out. It's on page nine, nine of 14, and it's in section H, and it's number three. Actually, it's the end of number two and number three. And you'll notice that what's been struck out at the end of number two is the words "affordable" and "emergency housing programs in Eugene," and it's been replaced with workforce housing. Now, that's for, in general, but number three deals specifically in downtown. Am I correct? The provision does not apply to located in the downtown area east of Charnelton, so three would be now talking about downtown.
Correct.
It also uses the word workforce instead of affordable. And what we've been talking about for two years, and what the Housing Policy Board had talked about, was making a payment into an affordable housing fund to help provide affordable housing. That concept has now been replaced with the notion of workforce housing, which to me is a much more nebulous term than affordable housing, which has a HUD description and a federal definition. If we go forward with the language here, that would have an impact on the ability to provide affordable housing, I think, unless you expanded the concept of what workforce housing is to be this giant catch-all, which can include subsidized, affordable, workforce, whatever that is. If that's the intention, then I'm okay. But what I don't want to do is trade one kind of housing for another kind of housing, because we desperately need affordable housing. And if we have taken that concept out and replaced it with workforce, to me, it doesn't seem like a trade that's necessarily a desirable one, since workforce is a nebulous term and affordable is a very defined term. So, if what we're saying here is that at some point later on, we may define what workforce is, and workforce may include the notion of affordability, that's something I can take back to the Housing Policy Board and say, "You're dealing with issues of affordable housing. There is still an opportunity here for MPT to provide affordable housing funds." But I want to know that that is still built into this and not, "We've just gotten rid of affordable housing and replaced it with workforce," whatever that is.
From a legal perspective, it says workforce housing, because that's what was in the motion that you passed last week. There is no definition of workforce housing in the sense of how the council can choose to use the funds. That is something that you will have to do in the future before those funds can be used. So, I think the answer to your question is, it's up to the council to decide what workforce housing includes, and if you decide that workforce housing includes a HACSA project, it includes a HACSA project. You haven't defined that. This ordinance does not define that term for purposes of how you can use these funds. You'll have to do that in the future.
Okay. Then I would just encourage the council to be broad and flexible in its definition of workforce housing.
Alan?
Yeah, I was just looking back at an article that was in the Register of Guard about the HACSA project, and quoting Executive Director of HACSA Jacob Fox. He said that "The parcels of land OB and HACSA plan to build on are legally separate. We can move forward with our project at any point, and OB can do the same." Doesn't seem like they're independent. It seems like they're much more independent, if not fully independent, of one another as opposed to dependent upon each other. So, that brings up a question for me, that if the HACSA project can go forward independent of the OB project, and the HACSA project can't by itself get a MPT, that's correct, because it's getting federal--
It'll get a 20-year low-income housing tax exemption.
It doesn't get a MPT, though. It gets the federal tax exemption and a different one altogether.
It's a state tax exemption. It's LERTI, and it's a 20-year, not a 10-year, so there's no MPTs in affordable housing projects.
Right. So, it gets its own tax exemption, and you couldn't get a MPT on top of that, because that would be double-dipping. So, if the HACSA project's getting that anyway, and the OB project combines with it, and they're going to get that tax exemption regardless, and build these affordable houses, and it's an independent project, what is it that we're getting in terms of quantifiable public benefit from the OB project if that project's going to happen anyway, and they're exempt from the 10% fee? Because this project's already happening, and if OB's not building workforce housing in the rest of this project, then I don't see that we're getting anything.
I think it was--
And we're not getting the 10%.
Yeah, I think, you know, you're pointing to a specific example that may not fit, may or may not fit the criteria. It was really written to factor in projects like EWEB, where you're going to have, you know, a master-planned site, you're going to have single ownership of land, but that's probably going to be parceled out and developed separately from a private entity to a nonprofit entity, and for those things to happen together, because we think that's a really good outcome. Whether it works perfectly for the OB situation that you just said, that's a policy decision of whether council wants to have that in there or not. It wasn't written specifically for that. It's just to capture this kind of co-development, again, which is the likely way that affordable housing is going to be built, at least for now. Separate ownership, maybe it's the land zone by the same entity, but it's probably going to be co-developed by a nonprofit and a for-profit.
Co-developed, I don't know what that means.
Jointly, in the same development site. That's kind of how we tried to define it.
I think Director Jacobs, just, Fox, said that they're independent, according to the Register of Guard, and they always get it right. So, I guess I'm pretty troubled by that, that we would end up not getting the 10% fee out of this particular project, because there's a particular type of low-income, affordable housing that already gets a tax exemption, and we would not, and then we'd exempt them from the 10% for something that, and we wouldn't get anything. So, I'm troubled by that. Second question. I shared Claire's concerns. I had three major revisions that I wanted to see in MPT: clear and quantifiable public benefit, enforcement of the laws, and also more transparency. And I shared Claire's concern about accountability enforcement of the laws, and I think that we've got it pretty good in here, and that we're able to nail that down with this new language, which is a big improvement. I had a question about the motion that I put forward the other day. You have that in writing, and when would be appropriate time to bring that up?
No.
Now, at this point?
So, I'll pass this around and let you all know what it is. This is the motion that Alan sent out yesterday, the day before, sometime in the last couple of days--
Saturday or Sunday.
--has been put into this ordinance. And so, you'll see in places highlighting, in the first place is at the bottom of page two, you see some highlighting. Anything that is highlighted is a change from what I handed out. Your short one? I got a couple more. Is a change from what I sent out on Friday and what I just handed out. So, what this would do is take what Alan had sent out, put it into ordinance language, so that if you decided that you agreed with Alan's motion, what you would do is adopt this version of the ordinance rather than the earlier version of the ordinance.
Okay.
So, I move to adopt this version of the ordinance with the, that restores the language about the limitation on rate of return.
Second. So, in response to this, I have both George Brown and Mike in the queue.
And Mayor, can I ask a question? So, Alan, was it your intention to, if your motion passes, that the council will have actually adopted the ordinance? Or is it, I just want to be clear on, are you--
Substitute.
Because normally, we would have--
We don't have a motion on the floor.
We don't have a motion, and so yours isn't a substitute for something. So, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what the council would be voting on.
This incorporates everything in the previous one you just handed out.
Yes.
And so, if we adopted this, it would include the provision about the limited return on investment?
If by "this" you mean the one that's entitled "Adoption Ordinance with Councilor Zelenka's Proposed Amendments"?
Yes.
Yes.
And I move to adopt this version of the Councilor Zelenka proposed amendments highlighted.
Second. Move to second. Okay. So, George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to come back to subsection H1 after we have this discussion and vote. I'm not satisfied with that. I may make another motion. I won't support this. I won't support this. We, I think it sends a terrible message at the last minute to do a big revision like this. My sense from the development community is that while there are provisions of what we came up with last Wednesday that they would like to see changed, I think their sense is, "We can live with this. We can move forward with this. We can build housing with this, and we can contribute the 10% of the exemption back to the workforce housing fund." I'm not particularly, totally, 100% pleased, but I can live with it. I think we're at a good spot. I think we did something really good last Wednesday. We set the parameters for setting up a workforce housing fund and ways to pay into it. Now, it won't mean much for a few years, but eventually, we are going to provide housing help for a huge segment of the community that has nothing. And we've discussed this a little bit before. In general, low-income housing and affordable housing, that is for people that are making less than 60% of the area median income. Workforce housing is, they have no help, because they make more than that. And so, workforce, we haven't landed on an exact definition of percentages of the AMI. And that's what my other motion, which I had hoped would go first, addresses. Just a little, you know, housekeeping, tidy up what we did on Wednesday regarding that. So, they have nothing. They have nothing. And really, you know, we know that 60% at least of the people in Eugene are housing burdened, and that includes buying a house, too. So, the amount of people that are rent burdened is way over 60%. And a lot of those are workforce, housing people. So, I think that we risk, if we add these extra requirements, I think we risk losing the council consensus that, there were seven of us that voted for the amendments last Wednesday. That's a really good consensus. That's really solid. I think we will encourage other councillors to go, "Oh, well, I don't like this section. I want to change that." I mean, we're almost there. We're just so close. I will definitely need another round. I think people will cry foul, changes at the last minute. And I have other reasons why I can't support this, and I'll need a second round to finish off. Thank you.
I guess the first and smartest thing for me to do here, and I have a number of things to say with this, A, I agree with what George has just said, B, I move to substitute for the original motion, and if I have a second, I'll speak to that.
Second.
Okay. I would like us to substitute for the original thing that we agreed to on Wednesday and as a part of what was put forward in our packet. Again, that's a place where all of us landed that doesn't please anyone in particular, but it doesn't infuriate anyone in particular either. It's a good compromise. There are elements of Alan's thoughts here in his motion that are, for me, understandable. I understand the thinking behind them, and I understand the desire to try and accomplish a good end. But I believe that the mechanisms in his motion for how that will be imposed on developments would create a reality where that would never be used downtown. We would never see any more housing under this program built downtown, and that's a concern for me, because I don't believe they're realistically usable. So, I hope that my colleagues will support my substitute motion to go back to the original we agreed to Wednesday night, because I believe that's where the consensus of the community lies.
Alan?
I think this was an oversight on our part in the hurried fashion that we amended the ordinance, and this provision has actually been discussed and debated by council for several times, actually. And I would not consider this to be a last minute. I went back and looked in the April 2014, not 2015, but 2014 version of the ordinance, and this language is in there, all this language is in there. And it stayed there until we started changing the workforce housing, putting in the workforce housing component. When that went in, the limitation on ROI didn't make much sense, because we were getting all this affordable housing. It was likely we won't be able to make that, would be difficult to do anyway without having a limitation. So, this has been in the ordinance for over a year, well over a year, and I'd hardly call that last minute. To me, this really goes to the heart of transparency. One of the biggest issues I heard during the Capstone debate was the rate of return that they were getting, how we know that they're willing to get it. Is there any transparency to this? There's a one-shot deal upfront with a review panel as to whether or not what the developer's saying is correct, and if everything changes later on, and they end up getting 20% rate of return, or 16, or whatever it is, there's no way to deal with that issue. And who knew if the original one was correct or not? What this provision does is limits the rate of return to 10%, and also has the added transparency of requiring the documentation, albeit confidential, of ROIs for the upcoming period, as well as the tax forms and the pro forma for the project. So, I think that is the essence of the transparency. Otherwise, we don't really know what's going on with the pro forma, whether or not it was adhered to, and whether or not the forward-moving economics of the project made the project very, very favorable. We can't tell, because we have no provision to be able to go back and look. And that's what this does. So, I would hope that people would support it.
So, I've got George Brown, and then Mike, and then we're going to vote on the substitute motion.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I was up really late last night studying Councilor Zelenka's amendments, proposed amendments, and I was kind of going back and forth, because I agree with the principles involved there. They're basically the motions that I was holding in reserve last January. And I, if you'll, I know it was a long time ago, but here's that one. I've submitted motion number one that tied MPT to workforce housing and inlet payments. And I emailed council. I have copies right here. And I said, "Depending on the fate of the first motion, I may or may not make motions two, three, and four." And motion number one passed, and we've since refined it quite a bit. I did not make motion number two, three, and four, because I felt that the, this was the big one, creating a pathway for workforce housing. So, I did not make my motions that, you know, would have required a third pro forma like Portland does now. Portland-- Portland does now, Portland Housing Bureau. I did not make the motion that, you know, required the developer to provide full project-based audited financial statements, IRS tax returns, 10-year operating cash flow statement. I left, I did not make those motions to move those forward because I felt they were unnecessary because we did the big one already. I got, I stayed up late last night, I got up early this morning, I left a voicemail, and I sent an email to Dory Van Bockel. She is the housing program coordinator of the Portland Housing Bureau, replaced Kate Helen, this is a woman I dealt with most of my inquiries, she retired last year. Here's what Dory wrote back almost immediately. I asked her questions about their monitoring of rate of return and stuff like that, and she said, "The shortest, most straightforward answer I have for you is that we have proposed legislation to remove the rate of return cap requirement from our city code, scheduled to be heard later this month by the city council." And my fear is, we want the housing to be created. We want the money to flow into, you know, workforce housing fund. If we add too many, and I think this is one step over the line, I don't think that people will develop downtown. And it will defeat the whole purpose of the program, which I believe can be used beneficially and produce public benefit. And I just feel that if we go down this route, a lot of people will say, forget it, I'll find somewhere else in town to invest my money and make a development. I really think that's, that we run that risk.
And Mike.
Pass, let's vote.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Mayor, I just want to be clear on what you're voting on.
Substitute motion.
Well, I know, and I want to be clear as to, just so the record's clear, what your substitute motion is, is to substitute the version of the ordinance that I sent out on Friday, which is the same one that I handed out today called red line version.
After what we did on Wednesday, yes.
Right, the stuff that I emailed out on Friday takes into account what you did on Wednesday.
That's correct.
Clarification, yes. So if we vote for this, for either of these, we're voting for MUPD.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, this is just which version, the one we all agreed to on Wednesday or not?
It's still the
We're voting to substitute or not.
It's a MUPD.
We're voting for it.
We're just voting, which version do we approve or not approve?
Right.
You're voting which version you're going to continue the conversation with. This is not the final vote on the ordinance.
MUPD with the rate code or without?
Right. This is original or no is, let's
Because when it's substituted, then you have to go back to the main motion and vote for it if it passed as substituted, right? So there's one more step, is what you're saying. All right, so, ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five in opposition. One, two, three, it passes. So now we're ready for the substitute motion, the motion as substituted. Yes, Claire.
So I don't have any motions to make, I just wanted to make some general comments about the MUPD. But I also just wanted to say, as we toss around the phrases workforce and affordable housing, I think it's important to remember that a majority of people who live in subsidized affordable housing also work. I'm sure many of them would be happy to have that called out. I also think some of my colleagues are expecting a lot more projects to happen under this program than I actually think will be built. I think this tightened-up compromise program will result in a handful of new units over the next few years.
That's true.
And then I just wanted to say, this program has a very specific purpose, to incentivize construction of multi-unit housing in specific areas of the city that have been identified in our planning efforts as desirable places for greater density, and also present significant barriers to free market development happening on its own.
Yes, yes, yes.
So this doesn't include student housing, which is now going to be banned from the program, and it doesn't even include building in long-established residential neighborhoods. Each development will be considered on a case-by-case basis and will, in fact, face greater scrutiny than the non-MUPD developments that will happen around town due simply to market forces. This is a program that should be carefully used in a limited way, and if we do it right, should result in a handful of projects applying, not dozens. The data is clear, the kind of development this program helps to incentivize produces a long-term investment in our core that, in the long term, will yield greater returns in the form of property taxes than will cost in the tax deferral, and is much more cost-effective than subsidizing the expansion of the UGB and providing services to single-family houses on the edge of town. Taxpayers pay those costs directly in the public infrastructure that must be provided to those edge-of-town developments at great cost. With MUPD, we defer taxes on a building that would not exist, except, exist to provide future taxes if we didn't have this program. No public dollars are expended in the MUPD process, while expanding our UGB will require direct expenditure of tax dollars for development that will result in a much smaller tax base compared with a multi-unit housing development in our core. So we know we're going to grow in population, and we will need additional housing, and I think this is an effort to create denser housing in a way Counselor Clark spoke to earlier in our meeting, to meet many of our goals in terms of smart development as opposed to sprawling out to the edges of our town.
I want to point out that we are at 6:45 right now, so we need to, if there are other motions, we need to expedite our process and move through them rapidly. Counselor Brown.
Yes, I'd like to make my motion, I'll speak to it if I get a second. I move to amend section 2.946, subsections 2H, by adding the text as shown below to leave the decision of what constitutes workforce housing to future code amendments.
Second.
Moved to second.
All right, yeah, this is, these are one of the, some of the amendments that we made last Wednesday, where we said, okay, we're going to have some kind of workforce housing program. We don't know the exact mix of units to be provided, the percentage. We don't know how, exactly how the in lieu of payments are going to work. We don't know that, it's going to take study. There's 500 jurisdictions that have housing programs with requirements like this, it's going to take a little while to find out what the best fit for Eugene is. We don't know where the speed spot is. So the way that they, and this is just merely a housekeeping thing, this has not changed the substance of anything. The phrase I want to change is farther down in subsection H, and it says, "Workforce housing is housing with rents equal to or less than 30% of the AMI." And all I want to do is replace that with, "Workforce housing is housing with rents equal or less than 30% of a percentage of the area median income." Because we still, we need to define what we mean by workforce housing, and we haven't done that yet. If I was going to pull something out of the air from everything I've been reading the last few months, it would be workforce housing is people making from 60 to 100% of the AMI. In different towns, it's different, they have different ranges. Some just pick a single percentage. I think the range would be better. But the point is, I don't believe that we should be that specific in this ordinance. And this makes it less specific, and it, the median income to be determined by future code amendments, like what we did on Wednesday. I mean, I can read the whole thing, but that's
Accepted as a friendly.
So am I.
Pardon me?
Accepted as a friendly to my original motion for what we're putting forward.
I see, all right.
I think yours is done.
Correct, Mike, yours is done.
Mine was the motion for what the amendment was, this is an amendment to, or, excuse me, what the ordinance was, this is an amendment to that ordinance, and I accepted it as a friendly.
You're, you already voted on
Oh, we did.
You didn't make the main motion.
Ah, that's right. The main motion has not yet been made. Got it, you're correct, I apologize.
All right, Glenn.
So
But it has been seconded.
Well, for now, yes.
So one of the reasons why this, well, let me just explain the effect of this motion. You had a conversation about 10 minutes ago about whether HACSA at OB or EWEB, you know, the development at EWEB could include workforce housing in lieu of the 10% fee. This definition, if it goes away, means we don't know what would constitute workforce housing for purposes of a developer deciding to choose to do workforce housing in lieu of paying that 10% fee. There is language, and if you turn to page nine of the ordinance that I passed out, the original one, that's where George is making his amendment, there is language in paragraph one that says, "As part of the administrative rules adopted under the code, the city manager may further define," and what the city manager may further define is workforce housing unit. If you want to be able to allow a developer in the EWEB situation, for example, to do workforce housing, we need to somewhere define what workforce housing is. If you adopt George's amendment and you don't change the language in sub one to say that the manager can define workforce housing in an administrative rule, then we wouldn't be able to allow a developer to use workforce housing in lieu of that 10% payment.
I've got Mike and then George.
I still have 36 seconds.
He does.
Right? Yeah, well, yeah, this is the problem. See, we're, this idea of allowing OB's company to get credit for HACSA, it's not, it's not workforce housing. HACSA's not creating workforce housing, they are creating affordable and low-income housing.
George, I don't understand what's going on because they're starting over and giving you the complete
That was your 36 seconds.
That's wrong, yeah.
That was your 36.
I used up my 36, okay, well, I'll need another round. Thank you.
I disagree with my friend that, and that, oops, that, I disagree with my friend that this doesn't accomplish the same end, which is to build housing in our downtown that gets more populous and gets the right mix of housing in our downtown that we want. We get affordable housing as a result of this. I don't know that I accept my friend Allen's definition of, having read it in the paper, therefore, there's an extrapolation to be made there. I'm not sure it's entirely that separated, however. I would like us to get to a point where we have a future conversation as a council about what constitutes workforce housing and our combined ideas of how to accomplish our end with this motion, but I don't want to create a reality by adopting a quick amendment here that throws the kibosh on an existing proposal or makes this tool unusable downtown based on what I'm hearing the attorney say, I have concerns about that that I don't know. So I'm, it's the only reason why I'm debating that I would not want to vote for the amendment, even though I seconded it, because I don't want that reality. But what I do want is a full council conversation about what constitutes workforce housing and how should it apply to this. And I'm wondering if my, if my friend would consider, instead of the specific language, a substitute friendly that says, "We all agree that we will have a council work session on this within a certain quantity of time to define together workforce housing."
This is exactly what this amendment does. It says, "We can't be specific right now because we haven't had, we have not had a work session to define it."
I think that's a no to my friendly, as the mayor suggests, and I'm sorry to hear May I make an amendment then, or a substitute motion then, that we have a council work session within, immediately after the break, within one month after the break, where we have a serious discussion about what constitutes workforce housing?
Second.
And if I can speak to that.
Yes, sir. It's out of order because you're not, you can't put that, I mean, that's not an amendment to the ordinance. You could add that language, I mean, you can make that
It's a substitute for his amendment?
Well, it's not, right now, you're debating, should you adopt this ordinance? And so any amendment needs to be, how do you want to change the words of the ordinance? What you're talking about is direction to the manager to have a work session, that wouldn't go in an ordinance, that's just direction. So it'd be a motion that you would want to make.
Then with my last 30 seconds, I'll say, George, I will probably vote against this, but I will turn around immediately and move to do that because I don't believe this is the, I haven't spent enough time to know that this is the perfect answer to what I think you and I both share as a goal.
Okay, George, and then we're going to vote.
Well, okay, here's the problem, if we do this, here's how it reads now. Workforce housing is with rents equal, is housing with rents equal to or less than 30% of the area median income. The area median income is $38,300. 30% of that, equal to or less, 30%, figure it out. It doesn't include HACSA, it doesn't include any housing that St. Venice builds, it doesn't include that. So that means that OB cannot be, get credit for this housing because you're saying now that it's 30%. You know, that's like, what is that? I don't know what it is, it's about $26,000 a year, you know? Whereas the other project, the HACSA project, will cover people with incomes much lower than that, much lower than that. And by the way, that's, there's a rent, you know? That's a rent, 30% is a rent figure. So you see how you're mixing the categories here improperly
A little.
With this language? We, if we approve this, then OB won't, he won't get his 10% discount because, I mean, you know, he won't have to pay the 10, I mean, he will have to pay the 10% fee because you're not providing, you're not providing workforce housing. Because HACSA doesn't do workforce housing.
If, based on the prior conversations that you have, and this language hasn't changed, I can't remember when we put this language in, it's my understanding that OB would qualify, a project at EWEB would qualify. If it turns out that they wouldn't, then we can come back to you and say, oops, there was a glitch. The only place that this can apply right now, because the only place where MUPDs can be approved right now is east of Charnelton in the downtown area. So the conversation that you want to have about all the other workforce housing issues, you can have, and that conversation has to happen before you can approve MUPD for anywhere else.
So this doesn't
So we're going to vote on this? Ready?
This doesn't screw it up.
On George's motion.
Yeah, on George's motion, okay.
It would screw it up. You don't need to do his motion, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, we're going to vote on George's motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three in opposition. One, two, three, four, five, it goes down, we're back to the substitute motion, yes.
I move that we hold a council work session, well, I'm not speaking
You're one vote too early.
Again, all right, I'll have to wait till afterwards. All right, fine, sorry.
You have another motion, George?
I have another motion.
I wanted my colleague to understand that it's important.
Okay, George, go.
Well, I'm really concerned here about subsection one underneath this one we've been discussing. I don't really like the city manager may further define workforce housing unit, establish requirements. I think that's council's job. But I suppose we can discuss that later. And I suppose we can challenge the word, this section above, it's totally messed up. The reason, it's because I'll just like to reiterate this. They're not creating workforce housing, they're creating housing that's affordable and low-income. It's terribly unfair to every other developer that wants to do a project downtown because their competitor is not paying 10% of the property tax exemption into the workforce housing fund, and they have to. That's simply not fair. We're creating, we're giving a competitive edge to somebody for no good reason.
So George, are you putting motion out?
Well, unfortunately, yeah, I think I will. I say that anyone developing downtown, east of Charnelton in the downtown plan, must pay the 10% of the tax exemption into
Your motion is for anyone who builds anything downtown. Glenn, you want to take it from
Yeah, other than the affordable.
On page nine, in subsection three, I believe what George is proposing is to delete the sentence at the end of paragraph three that says, "Alternatively, the owner may comply with the requirement to include not less than 30% of the unit." So he's proposing to delete that sentence, which would have the effect of not allowing that as an alternative, and everybody building downtown would have to pay the fee. So that's, I understand what he's proposing.
You captured it perfectly.
There is a second?
Is there a second?
There's a second?
Second.
Uh, second, okay.
All right, I'd like to speak to that just briefly. You were offering We were offering, you know, we started off with something really good. We created a very good product on Wednesday. We've been working on it for a long, long time. A lot of people have been, not just us. And I think we have a product here that everyone can live with. But when you, it's not our job to create unfair competitive advantage for one single developer or two at the EWEB, and when's that going to happen? You know, that's years off, probably, with the recent problems that they discovered. It's not our job to set up, to create an unlevel playing field for developers. And that's what we're doing if we let this lie. And it's simply not fair. And any business person will tell you that. So yes, we need to remove this section to level the playing field. They can certainly afford it. If the other developers can afford to do it, and I think most of them have accepted the fact that that's a requirement now, then certainly this one single developer can afford to do it, too. If everyone else can, they can, too. It's simply not fair. Thank you.
I'll vote against the motion because I disagree with my friend's definition of this. I don't believe it's creating unfair competition by treating one differently than the other. I believe under the original discussion with the footprint being the thing that we analyze, we're creating affordable housing within the larger footprint of the whole project. Brian OB's made it very clear, both in the newspaper and communications with us, that in the absence of the Mupti, his development will not go forward. I believe that that puts in peril the affordable housing project as well if they were to have to go forward on their own. Now, I know what Allen said about the newspaper, but what it didn't ask was, if none of that got done, would the HACSA project go forward anyway? And I don't believe it would. And as a result, I'd like to make sure that we do this the right way under definitions that a majority of us agree with, but I'd like us to move forward with the place we've all landed in agreement so far and come back to that at a future point.
Allen?
I'm not convinced it's a dependent project. What I know about low-income housing projects, they're pretty independent, and they have their own financing associated with them because they have an enormous amount of tax credit advantages to people who invest in them. And if the project occurs even without the OB project, then we're whole. But if the project goes ahead and the OB project goes ahead, it would have, we would have gotten nothing for this. We would have gotten the HACSA project regardless. So I don't think we're getting anything in terms of public benefit by allowing them to do a project that wouldn't have gotten Mupti in the first place because it has, already has a better tax exemption. And just granting it to the rest of the project doesn't make any sense to me because they're not really that linked.
Claire?
So I think this is a good discussion. I think I'm going to vote against Counselor Brown's motion because I tend to agree with Counselor Clark on this one, that I, the way that, if we're going to talk about this one particular project, first of all, there's going to be an application. Council will have to approve that application, so we might get it on the table and decide, no, this is not a project we support for Mupti. So it's not a done deal. Secondly, I don't think the HACSA project would even have been conceived of without Brian OB's impetus. So I disagree, while they might be developed separately and have separate timelines for how they go forward, I think they're interrelated in terms of them happening and that we wouldn't get the HACSA without Mr. OB's efforts. So I tend to lean towards, where Counselor Clark is on this, that, you know, we still might not approve the Mupti for Mr. OB's project, and he would have to decide then whether he was going to build it or not. But at this point, I don't want to preclude that from being a potentiality. And I agree also with the city attorney reminding us that we can come back to this ordinance and we can make further changes to it down the road if we decide, oh, we didn't quite dial this in correctly and we really need to rejigger it some more.
So I think we're ready to vote on Counsel, we're going to vote on Counselor Brown's motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, and opposition. One, two, three, four, five, it goes down. Now we're back to the substitute motion.
Call for the question?
The main motion.
The main motion as substituted.
Right.
Is there a motion?
Questions been called.
I call for the question.
Allen?
I call for the question.
Okay.
The second.
All right.
So you vote on whether to close debate, require six of you to vote to close debate.
Okay, you want to close debate? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, in opposition, two, so it passes. So now we're going to vote.
Correct.
Question on what exactly we're voting on?
You are voting on whether to adopt...
The Wednesday agreement.
Redline.
The, what I handed out, that's called the redline version. It's the same thing that I emailed out on Friday, as both the clean version and a redline version.
Wednesday.
And then we'll still need to put the prepared motion out after that.
No, this is, no, this is it.
This is it.
Okay, everybody ready? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and opposition, one, okay, it passes. Okay, yes.
Just to let you know that you had a public hearing scheduled for next Monday to extend the sunset on the extension. We will cancel that public hearing because this will take effect before the suspension goes away.
Moved for a work session as soon as practical after break to discuss workforce housing and its definition.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, in opposition. One, it passes. Okay. And just to remind you all, there's no, and the public, there's no work session on Wednesday.
There's no work session this week.
This Wednesday.
This week. This Wednesday.
Yeah.
Ah, that's interesting.